First of all, we are in masks now in Hamilton County, in our building. We are now asking that people wear masks. And second of all, our Vice President is not here today, so I'd like to make a motion to excuse Vice President Reese.
Second?
Commissioner Summer Adumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Very good. So we'll move forward, and we have someone on Zoom. Greg Kesterman, our Hamilton County Health Commissioner, is going to give us an update on COVID-19. Welcome.
Well, good afternoon, Commissioners. Before I talk too much, can you hear me?
Yes, very good. Uh huh.
Wonderful. Feel free to stop at any point. I don't see you very well, so it's hard to tell if there's a question while I'm going through my presentation. So to start off with today, we are at 272 cases per day. This is a seven-day moving average. And you can tell, looking at this, this is the highest we've been really since the beginning of the year, when we were coming off the first rollout of the Omicron variant here in Hamilton County in Ohio. That said, the 272 compared to the 2,470 at the beginning of the year is quite different. I think both at the beginning of the year and now, we are only seeing a portion of the positive cases, in large part because people are using that at-home testing that we now have widely available. The county as a whole, you've seen this map before, is pretty much, once again, kind of covered with cases. There's no one particular area that is seeing a significant increase. You've asked in the past, but typically, these areas that are considered low, the blue areas, are likely more a contribution of unusual census tracts. I wouldn't say there's anything positive happening in those census tracts, but rather, just not a good mix of what's happening with our population. The current variant that we are seeing in the nation and in Hamilton County and the region is the BA5. And I think a better view, this is Region 5 data, so kind of Ohio and a couple other states nearby. Seventy-eight percent of the variants that we are seeing right now are the BA5. And you can see that in this bottom right-hand graph. It's the only variant on the upward swing, and it's really the predominant variant. If someone gets COVID-19, it's likely, likely this variant. So, you know, the cases, as I mentioned, are not a perfect representation, because a large portion of our population continues to use at-home test kits, which is encouraged. But a real true representation on how we are doing as a community with regards to COVID-19 is hospitalization data. And so the graph on the left represents our region's hospitals. We see about 200 people within our hospital systems. The graph on the right represents our ICU admissions. And right now, we're somewhere between 25 and 30 individuals within the ICU. To put this into perspective, once again, though, at the beginning of the year, we saw nearly 1,000 patients within our hospital system. So we're about 20% of that right now, but nearly 200. And the ICU is kind of the same thing. We're just shy of 250 people in the ICU. Today, we are at 28 individuals within the ICU. So much better spot at this point in time for our community, but certainly, we are starting to see some increased impact of COVID-19. And how that ultimately plays out with regards to death. Right now, we are seeing about one person die every four days as a result of COVID-19. And typically, those are people who have made their way through the hospital, ultimately the ICU, and then not making it out of the ICU. The CDC currently lists Hamilton County in the upper threshold for cases per 100,000. We are at 242. You can see all of southwest Ohio is also in that same threshold. And then when looking at our community levels, Hamilton County, as you know, last week transitioned to high community transmission. And that looks at our cases, our percent of hospitalizations, and our ability to stack those beds. And the big transition now, and I appreciate the comments at the beginning of the meeting and looking at everyone at the commission table wearing masks, the big change is we are asking the public to wear masks when in indoor public locations. And that's, once again, to help slow the spread of COVID-19. We know masks have an incredible impact. We've seen lots of signs that supports this. And so Hamilton County is really asking all public, when you're at the grocery store or any indoor location that's public, we ask you to wear masks. Giving us a little bit of perspective, July 7th on the left, you can see most of Ohio is in low transmission, including Hamilton County. Just a couple weeks later, we kind of drastically shifted to most of the state being in high transmission or high community spread, including Hamilton County. So shifting away from that, really, the good news story is that we continue to see progress with all of our vaccinations, particularly those youngest in our community. We're now at 35.5% for the 0-19s. The major driving factor for the significant increase is for those between the ages of six months and five years of age. Lots of kids are out getting vaccinated. We are also seeing lots of adults coming back for booster shots at our clinics, and we are continuing to see lots of people come in for questions. And we still have first doses for adults, which is fantastic news. Our clinics are operating five to six days per week at two locations most days of the week. And hopefully, beginning by the end of next week, we will also have the newly released Novavax vaccine available to folks who would prefer to get that instead of one of the vaccines that are already released. All of the location information, as you all know, is available on testandprotectc.com. You can also find testing locations, including the locations supported by the Board of County Commissioners. There's free PCR testing in Hamilton County, which is fantastic. And I would encourage folks to take advantage of these opportunities. That is all I have prepared for today, but I am certainly happy to take any questions.
Thank you so much for your report. I just had a quick question. I was reading something, a statement that you were saying possibly you didn't see the numbers going up from this weekend. And I was thinking about, Commissioner, all the activities that had happened this weekend, even though they were outdoors. It said that you didn't foresee the numbers going up from all of those visitors from out of town. And so I know you can't really tell for sure, but I thought I would ask you to clarify.
Yeah, so in general, right now, the CDC recommendation is really focused on indoor locations. We certainly believe that individuals who are high at risk for COVID-19 should wear a mask in those outdoor locations. As far as any spikes, typically, you wouldn't see an increase in COVID-19 until maybe two or three days after exposure. And we are not seeing any drastic increases at this point. And we're probably, you know, some activities this weekend were Friday and Saturday. So you would expect to start to see those cases materialize if we were going to see them. My team does watch these numbers every day. I get an update every day around 7:30 a.m. And this morning's numbers were very comparable to what I've seen over the last couple weeks.
Okay. Thank you so much, Commissioner Drehouse.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Commissioner, for joining us virtually. I've got a couple of questions for you. So I was just looking at the Test and Protect website, and, you know, you mentioned that the county is supporting these test sites through our ARPA dollars. We look like geniuses right now, you know? I mean, in the beginning, we were all wondering if we really needed to support testing. And here we are at a very different time, and we've got lots and lots of testing opportunities. So thank you for mentioning that. So I just want to remind folks, test and protect. And I'm looking at the site right now. There are many, many opportunities to get a PCR test, which leads to my question. So I know a lot of people are not using PCR tests. They're using at-home tests. And so two things. First of all, how reliable are those with this new variant? And assuming that you answer that they are reliable, I'm wondering if you can help us better understand how to get the at-home tests.
So, yes, the first question, how reliable are they? They seem to be extremely reliable with the new variants of COVID-19. In fact, they've proven to be very successful at detecting. That said, if you have a negative test and you have some of those symptoms and you have concerns, I would always recommend you then go one step further and go get PCR tested. So today, if you take an at-home test kit and you come back positive and you have symptoms, you are certainly, from my perspective, you should consider yourself positive for COVID-19. And you really don't need to go get PCR tested unless your employer or your doctor is asking you to. That said, if you come back negative and you have symptoms, before you go out and about, I would recommend you take that one additional step and get that PCR test, whether it's from one of the county-operated sites or a private site. They can all be found at testandprotect.com. And I believe, Commissioner, you asked a second question, and I didn't recall.
It's about, if people want to find those at-home tests, you know, I know we can get them through the mail, through the federal government. Are they also available locally?
Yeah, so they're actually available several spots. And I can't hear you perfectly, but the first spot that we always recommend, if you've not exhausted the free test from the federal government, we'd ask that you check out those first. They do take a little bit to get mailed. So if that's not an option or you've exhausted that, then here locally, there are several opportunities to get test kits. You can come to Hamilton County Public Health's office. You can go to our vaccine clinics. You can go to several public library locations while they have them in supply, as well as locations listed on testandprotect.com. Finally, you know, they are coming down significantly in price. You know, you can find them at pharmacies. Large retail settings as well have them. Typically, they're under $25. In fact, yesterday, I heard someone sharing that they found them for $5 at a location. So if you're in a pinch and you need one tonight, and the free locations are closed and you don't have any at home, I would certainly recommend you check out one of those locations.
Yeah, thank you. I'm sorry you can't hear me very well. I'm wearing a mask, that's why. We're back to the masks. Yeah, and thank you to you for making those available at no cost for people. I have, I think I picked some up at a vaccine site a number of months ago. So thank you for making those as accessible as you have. One more thing, because I personally am hearing a lot about people that have been in contact with people that are testing positive. I think there's a little bit of confusion about what then to do by way of the isolation and, you know, because it's changed a little bit by way of the CDC guidance. Can you just remind people, if you are testing positive, say you have taken at-home test, you test positive, then what is the timeframe there for staying at home?
Yep, perfect. I'm glad you bring it up, and you're correct. It is getting confusing. So the most important thing, if you start to develop symptoms and you take that test and you test positive, the day you develop symptoms or the day you have that test, if you don't have symptoms, is considered day zero. Then you count out five days, and you're supposed to stay home and isolate from others, including those in your household, for the total of five days. At the end of that five days, for day six through 10, you should wear a mask. You are able to go back to work. You're not encouraged to test again, because sometimes the coronavirus can stay in your nasal passages, but you should wear that mask for up to 10 days. For those individuals that were around you before you tested positive and during that incubation period or possibly after you developed symptoms, they should wear a mask as well for 10 days, but they are not required to quarantine at home any longer. They're able to continue to go to work. They're continuing to wear that mask when around others. And then if they develop symptoms, they're highly encouraged to test right away.
Thank you. And I've got one last, very quick question. The flu is also moving around in Hamilton County. Do you know how prevalent the flu is right now?
So technically, we are officially outside of flu season about two weeks ago, but we are still seeing cases of flu within our community. It's still fairly low this year as a whole, has been much less than previous years, with the exception of 2020 and 2021 because of the masking requirements. But it is still in our community. And if you test negative for COVID and still have symptoms that are flu-like, we would encourage you to stop by your doctor and be tested for flu.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Yeah, my mom had symptoms, and turns out it was the flu, and it was not COVID. So it's, just to add another layer of confusion to what's going on in our community right now. So, all right, very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I've noticed people with allergies, they think it's allergies, and then they go get tested, and it's COVID. So, but thank you so much for the work that you and your staff do. Thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, next item on our agenda is a resolution appointing three members to the Hamilton County CRA Housing Council for implementation of Hamilton County Community Reinvestment Area Program. And I will make a motion to appoint Tom Moller, Jessica Johnson, and David Thompson to the CRA program.
Second?
Commissioner Summer Adumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. Next order on our agenda is presentation from Great Parks. Tom, I'll meet her.
Yeah, thank you very much for having me, Commissioners. Really appreciate your time. If you have understanding, hear me, just ask me to repeat, it's the first presentation I've given in a mask in a while, but glad to be wearing it today. I also have Commissioner Burwinkle here with me today, so if there's any other discussion items, clicker's ready to go. Great. Just want to start off, I know we've met several times and knew a lot about the parks, but I'd like to start off with a quick facts about us. The ones I'd like to point out here today is our 83% preservation rate. You know, by our own standards, we do not develop more than 20% of any parkland to remain preservation. That's why we exist. We are a conservation-based agency, and we're very proud to still maintain the 83%. We also are the largest landowner in Hamilton County, approaching 18,000 acres in total protected green space. As the Commission knows, we passed a levy last year, so we now operate on two levies, the .95, which the term ends in '26, and then the additional levy, which was passed last year, which would expire in 2031, taking our total annual budget to $52.3 million. I put a link on there about job opportunities. Since the pandemic, since we got back to working, we've had to work on our rates and our pay rates. It's been very competitive in Hamilton County. A lot of like agencies are experiencing the same thing. So we've increased our rates, so we are still hiring. So if that link can be shared out through any county sites, I would greatly appreciate it, because we have vacant full-time and part-time positions as we speak. We're still looking to hire hundreds of individuals for seasonal or year-round or full-time year-round jobs. But the link is there, and would encourage anyone to check out that site if they've interested in working for us. And then a note, every five years, we do an economic impact study, because it's our job at the parks to maximize the use of public tax dollar with private funds and other funds. And happy to report that for every dollar in tax we receive, we generate 466 in economic activity in Hamilton County. And we do that study through University of Cincinnati every five years. Our actual return on investment went up during the pandemic, because we had our largest attendance that we had seen in 19 years that I've been here. Just a quick snapshot of our board. As I mentioned, Mr. Burwinkle's here with me today. Karen Laverdy, second from left, is our current board president. And the five Commissioners, we meet once a month. This is our current footprint, so I mentioned, close to 18,000 acres, 22 parks now. The 22nd Park is our newest property, the work road property in Westwood. We are, you might say, well, that's kind of an odd name, but we haven't named it yet. So it's geographically located on a work road. It's our 22nd Park, 22 acres of green space, right in the heart of that community. We're currently getting ready to start on our public engagement plan. We're very excited, the community is very excited to bring out our newest park. Those are the kind of opportunities that we're looking for, places where you have a community that currently isn't served with green space, preserve green space. We find these opportunities, as we did through the Green Acres Foundation. It's a great chance for us to bring parks into communities. I don't want to forget about what's in downtown. A lot of people will look at our map and say, wow, there's a giant hole in the middle of your map. But a lot of that is taken up by, if you see the lighter green and the sort of the magenta-purple color, those are city park systems and the city recreation centers. The city has over 5,000 acres in the city limits, a wonderful park system. But the white squares with the dark text then represent our presence in the city. And our presence has grown tremendously over the last several years. I mentioned the work road property. A couple of those I'd like to call out, our Nature Center at the Summit in Rose Lawn, which is a partnership with New Prospect Baptist Church. And the Beachmont Connector, which is the bridge over the Little Miami Scenic River. We'll be doing ribbon cutting this fall. Send an invite to the Commissioners. Love to have you there. And then the Oasis Trail, the Oasis Line of Great Parks of Hamilton County, Sorda and the city of Cincinnati are working on that project. Great Parks has now taken the lead on design, engineering, and construction of that trail. We also now operate Lunkin. We've taken over Lunkin maintenance and operations from the city, so the city could focus on Wasson Way. So we will actually control the Little Miami Scenic Trail from Terrace Park to downtown Cincinnati, to show that we want to support and be present in the city of Cincinnati. And I wanted to take a lot of focus right now on events and programs, and really, what do we do to impact our community? And that's a really important part for my team and for the board. So I wanted to highlight some things that are happening right now. So last week, July 15th, was, we were excited. We returned the Kids Outdoor Adventure Expo. We had to take two years off because of the pandemic, but we were back this year. And even though we saw less rec centers, a lot of the rec centers and daycares that normally would send children are still kind of on a minimal field trip program due to the pandemic. But what we did see was a larger attendance in the general public. It's a free event, so we still had over 3,000 children get to experience the outdoors all night long, whether it was fishing, rafting, nature education, yoga, learning about environmental benefits. It was a fantastic day. The weather cooperated. We're very excited, and that event continues to grow, and we continue to bring on new partners every year. So look forward to having that event again next year. Some other events, a lot of different things here. Our summer concerts continue. All this is online. Our Women in the Outdoors is more popular than ever since the pandemic. So learning about hiking, backpacking, wilderness skills. And then we launched a new senior series called Connect with Nature this year that's happening right now, and we'll bring it back in October and do more of a fall series of programs. The image on the far right, maybe a little difficult to see, but that is a smartphone and cell phone recycling station. So if you are needed to dispose of your phone, all of our visitor centers and golf pro shops are now taking those phones. So we're working with several different recycling companies, Cohen and others, because it's part of our sustainability commitment, we want to provide that. Our Holiday Lights recycling program has been so successful, we thought we'd get into the smartphone and cell phone business. So feel free to stop by and drop off the phone, and we'll take care of the rest. On the bottom left, we are very proud to be a sponsor of Cincinnati Pride this year. I mean, we sponsor every year. This year, we had a booth, and we were in the parade, part of our Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Plan for the Great Parks, and supporting, and we show our support to the Pride community and to our staff and others who visit our parks on a regular basis. And the last two squares, our community days are days where we don't require motor vehicle to enter the park. We have several days throughout the year. What I wanted to point out this year is we had a community day on Juneteenth. We also had, we did not have, we opened our children's gardens, this is a Sunday, to the general public, no admission for our children's garden. We saw increased numbers of residents from Woodlawn and surrounding communities come out and visit the park that day, and it's something we'll continue to do every, every year. And then finally, we're proud to be one of the hosts for National Night Out, which is a major law enforcement event. We're going to be hosting at Witten Woods Harbor. So if you happen to be out in the Witten Woods Springfield Township area on Thursday, August 18th, please come by and see us. We'll be partnering with all the local law enforcement agencies to have that event, but our Rangers will be the host. And then our two biggest fall events are still coming up. So on your right is Hispanic Heritage Festival. This is our second year. We had over 1,300 folks attend last year. It was a great way to recognize the culture of our Hispanic community. Sharon Woods is second busiest park, and we've seen a very large increase in Hispanic population using the park. So we wanted to have an event where our guests are coming. So we're looking forward to making it even bigger this year. Dance, vendors, crafts, education, everything's bilingual, all the signs are bilingual. It's just a fantastic day to celebrate that community in Sharon Woods. And then the one on the left is, that's a photograph from Nature Center at the Summit in Rose Lawn. So our second year hosting the Urban Farming Festival. We actually just wrapped up a whole urban farming program series this summer, where we taught kids in that community about farm-to-table. There are garden plots at New Prospect Baptist Church. There's also orchards in the community. And then we're going to wrap up with this Urban Farming Festival in October, live music, a lot of cultural exhibits, and a lot of community. Folks will come in and vendors and work with our staff and just have a fun day of celebration. We did move it to October for the weather. Last year, it was about 96 degrees, and we hosted it, so we hope to increase attendance by having it on a cooler day in the fall. But again, that's Nature Center at the Summit in Rose Lawn. And then one other way that I want to just bring up to the Commissioners, that we are making an impact in our community is through Adopt a Class. Many of you may know Mr. Burwinkle is the founder of Adopt a Class, and it's 19 years now. This is a photograph from Ms. Bailey's fourth grade class at Westwood Elementary. When we knew we were going to get property in Westwood, I told my leadership team that the best way we can lead is by example. Let's go adopt a class, and let's let these kids be a part of planning the park that they will be using in their own community. So the pictures on the top are from Earth Day, but the pictures on the bottom is my team with the class, and they came out, and we did like a design charrette, and the kids helped us locate features and amenities that they would want to see in the park. It was a fantastic day. It was their last field trip of the year, and it was really exciting. We'll be back in the fall to do another fourth grade class, and we'll continue to involve the kids in seeing their new park become a reality. And in my final couple of slides, as you know, part of our levy commitment was infrastructure projects, as well as projects from our park facilities master plan, which was two years and over 4,000 contacts with the community about what do you want to see in your Great Parks? The six projects here are just six of over 30 on our list, but I just wanted to show the Commissioners that through our different themes of conservation, recreation, outdoor education, there's lots of different things that we're doing all over the county, especially the one about the harbors. You know, our three harbors are our three busiest parks, three different geographic locations. It's a great way for us to improve those harbors, to increase visitation, and continue providing that amenity for the communities. And one way we're doing that is Sharon Woods Playground, it was over 20 years old, it's our oldest playground, and it's time to replace it. So thanks to the passage of this levy, we're able to build a new destination playground right next to the Sharon Woods Visitor Center. What was really cool about how my staff is handling this year, as you see the photos on the right, again, similar to what we did in Westwood, we had a day where we told the community, bring your children, let them help us pick colors, shapes, and inspirational images. And the three on the left are three different playgrounds throughout the country that the children had picked. That's what they'd like to see to play on. So we'll use those as images to create this new destination playground, which will be open in 2023, so stay tuned for more details. And that's all I have. Be glad to take any questions.
Thank you so much for your presentation. I could stay in a park all day long and sit, and I think more people need to know about parks and what it can do for your mental health.
Yes.
Even if you're not involved in a program that's going on at that time. How much is a permit per year to get into a park?
Yeah, sure. It's $15 for county or for, excuse me, out-of-county residents. For non-residents, $16, I'm sorry. And it's $10 for county residents for the whole year.
Okay. And there are certain programs, I keep hearing you say, free, free, free.
Yes.
And that's great. There are some programs that you have to pay to be a part of it.
Correct. Certain ones do charge.
I didn't hear you.
Certain programs, we do charge a small fee to recover cost.
Okay.
We advertise, though, on the front end, if there's a cost associated. But when it's a community program, we don't require the MVP the day of, and we don't, we not require a fee for the community program.
So things like fishing cost, has that been pretty consistent? Has that been raised or anything like that?
We've raised the cost of probably, I know at our lakes where we stock fish, so we purchase fish for more capacity. We've raised our fishing tickets, but for our kids' programs and our juniors, majority of those programs are free, especially when we do our kids' fishing derby, or we teach a kid to fish, or like we did at the Outdoor Adventure Expo. We just want to teach them how to catch their first fish, and all that is free.
And the reason why I ask those questions several, well, a few reasons. I want to be a better advocate for the parks, and so I'm just wondering if I could maybe get a list of what's free and what you have to pay for. I've gotten some residents that have sent me emails, concerns about a few things at the park, but just an advocate for parks. So thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
And it sounds like you guys are doing great things, so. Commissioner Drehouse?
Thank you. Thank you, Todd, for being here and for your presentation, and to Bill and to Elena. So I wanted to focus in on something that was detailed in one of your slides regarding bike trails.
Yes.
So I think that we in Hamilton County, at this moment in time, have some real opportunities related to bike trails. You guys just passed a levy, Sorda just passed a levy. This Commission has dedicated money over two budget cycles to trails that now sits in the TID to be activated, and the city is doing a lot related to bike trails as well. So I feel as though, and private donors for that matter. So I'm wondering, I've had some conversations with Wade over at The Crown.
Yes.
About what makes sense by way of more trails, where they go, what the connections look like. And I just want to say that if you look at the map, and your map actually delineated this as well, we have a lot of capacity on the east side related to bike trails. We've done a lot of investing, including the county, and we're very proud of that, and we should be proud of that, because there's a lot of connectivity over there. However, if you move to the west, you will find there's much, much less connectivity by way of bike trails. And we're, we started a little bit in Lower Priceville. We've got, you've got those pocket parks all the way out, US 50 with Gilde Park with the city, then Fernbank with you guys and then Shawnee. And so, you know, to my vantage point, that's a real opportunity because it's flat and there aren't that many flat places in the city really. So maybe an opportunity. I know that would be an expensive proposition because of the railway, but something to think about. And then the other opportunity is right up the Mill Creek where the beauty of the Mill Creek is that it goes through so many communities, different kinds of communities with this different socioeconomics. That from my vantage point, there is real opportunity there as the Mill Creek Alliance reclaims that waterway and the area around it. And there are some trails out in Northside. What's the name of that park out there?
Yeah, where the trail currently ends and out of, coming out of Northside.
Yeah, there's one that runs right along the Mill Creek and I can't remember the name of it. But there are, there's playground there, there's parking there. So there, there are some opportunities there. And then in Westwood, they're doing some trail work around where you guys are with the new property.
Yes.
Out in Westwood at the Gamble Estates. So I just wanted on behalf of myself and the folks that I've heard from related to trails to say that I think there's a lot, especially right now, of opportunity to collaborate and to leverage money where we can all work together to start to really activate some of these trails. So, and, and with the connectivity piece in mind for you all, and I know that you've got that triangle trail that you're working on as well. So lots of stuff, but I just want to plug, plug, plug.
Yeah.
For bike trails, because as you all know, during COVID, people jumped on their bikes and they also went out walking. And so I think there is a greater desire and really need as people get to and, you know, well, my, my friend Bridget Darty takes her bike to work. You know, so I think people really want to do that. And I, I, I want to say that we're ready to be partners in all of this so that we can all work together, create a fund of funds and then figure out where the best investments are. So I applaud your work, but I want you to know that we're pretty invested in, in doing the same. So hopefully we can partner in the future.
Yes, thank you very much. And if you don't mind, just a couple of quick notes on, on what you said. We, we do continue to meet with Ohio River West group. Bill and I have met with the group and I think MSD can be a part of that. So any, any.
Well, they are in the room at the moment.
So because when we met.
Diana's taking notes. So that's, yeah.
We had a meeting years ago with Mr. Checo when he was at MSD and we talked about possibilities of MSD projects combined with trail projects going west. So we've had that conversation, but we need to bring it back as new leadership and all those groups. The other thing I will say is the Chamber and sorta great parks and other groups, the Crown. We are working on a funding model to fund the entire Crown, which would include the Mill Creek corridor from the Ohio River to Northside. We're actively having meetings and having that conversations. The Chamber is leading the discussion on the funding. Because we're talking 25, 30 million dollar project, but I do believe the federal funding exists to support that with some local match. And then we are working on the northern portion. As you know, the day we were at the Mill Creek event, we took a group to walk a piece of railroad that we bought heading towards Sharonville. And then our newest focus on, on the west is we have a study out now on RFP for a Blue Way Water Trail and a Bike Trail on the Great Miami River to connect Butler County because they're, they're coming south and connect that all the way down to the Ohio River. That's a big part of the Great Miami River Coalition, which we're a member of. So a lot of opportunity there for tourism and local economic impact. So that's a new focus for us. We'll be starting that study later this year.
That's great. Yeah. It's, it's just an exciting time.
It is. It's very exciting.
To start to think about multimodal, especially when it comes to the trails. Well, I don't have any questions. I'm just always excited to see you all and thank you for the presentation. I mean, the, the county parks are a real asset to this community and I think people came to recognize that, especially during COVID. So thank you for your work.
Thank you.
And you were saying earlier about the vacancies that you have.
Yes.
I was in the Glenwood Meadows or Glenwood Gardens there yesterday. I went there after church and it is so well maintained. It was just, I'd go past there all the time and never went in. And I decided to go in yesterday, but you guys are just doing a great job.
Well, thank you. I'll share that with the staff.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner.
So do you guys participate in our jobs fair?
I, I don't know.
All right. So we, we have a jobs fair. We just had it. And so we just need to get you keyed in on that because we had lots and lots of people come.
Yeah, that would be fantastic.
Many county agencies were there. So next time we do a jobs fair, we'll make sure you guys get a notice.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you all.
Okay. Item four, MSD CIP presentation follow-up. Diana's here with her cohort. Just one today? You just brought one with you today?
I have two.
Oh, okay. Okay. Yeah, come on up.
Good afternoon, President DeMoss and Commissioner Drehouse. If, it's all right. I think for the first part, we have a presentation on the SBU program. But there were some follow-up questions we received. I think most of them were directly from you all. And Ryan was going to address those first.
Sure.
And then we can provide any, you know, written reports based on his feedback. So.
Thank you.
Hi, Commissioners. Excuse me. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Not used to wearing a mask recently. This should only take about five minutes. I've, I just wanted to respond to some of the questions that we heard at the last meeting. One of them was staffing issues and that impact on our projects.
Ryan, just pull it up just a little. Yeah.
Okay. So the staffing impacts that we saw were really during 2020, 2021. Kind of, I would say COVID related. And then, you know, after we came back from remote work, we, we had some people that left. And I think we were not uncommon. Like that was across all industries. People moved on to other jobs, left the city, went to different departments. So the impacts that we did see because of staffing are really limited to up until last year, 2021. So we have been able to hire, recruit people, hire people, put them into the roles that we needed over the past, like a year ago, I guess. And we've got three new engineers working as project managers. I will say the biggest uncertainty that we have is the, the lack of a defined Phase 2A plan. Because depending on how big that is or small, I mean, there's potential to really, I guess, double our workload in engineering. And I, you know, if that happens from, you know, one day to the next or one week to the, to the next, like we, we will be, I guess, hard pressed to ramp up. So that's just one thing that I think we ought to be aware of when it comes to staffing. But as of right now, we aren't, there aren't any additional delays being caused because of staffing. So that was.
Yeah, I, I think I asked this question. So I guess I was wondering if there had been delays due to some of the staffing challenges that you just mentioned in, in the projects that are in the pipeline.
So I think yes, the, like some cumulative delays, like there was nothing, when we were like in the middle of it during remote work, there was nothing that you could put your finger on. Like is this, it was just, in hindsight, you know, over, last year as we were looking back to the beginning, like to March of 2020, we'd say, okay, that, you know, maybe there were some cumulative effects here. And especially last year with people leaving, there were some delays in getting, uh, uh, design contracts of procurement. Like on our end, delays with getting things under contract. So that's, but.
So full speed ahead now, right?
It is full speed ahead.
Okay, great.
The, the, I think a related question was about late projects and, and what substantial completion deadlines. And I just wanted to let you all know that there are only, we only have four active projects that have, that have substantial completion milestones for the consent decree. Out of, we have about 175 active projects at any time. So in the course of a given year, we complete maybe 40 projects and then about, you know, 35 to 40 projects are added each year. There's about a five-year lifecycle of a capital project, including our local and assessment sewer projects. But of those 175, we're only talking about four projects that are remaining consent decree projects with deadlines. The rest of the projects, every project has a schedule. Schedules are always updated. The schedules, we, we establish a baseline schedule at the beginning and that's really to, to manage things as efficiently as we can. Whenever anything changes with the, due to whether it's inability to obtain right of way or something in the design, the schedule is updated. So we're constantly keeping the schedules updated and I can, you know, if I had notice about specific projects, you know, I could talk about the schedules or, you know, every project has a story. Obviously I can't talk about all of them today, but I probably know about the, you know, the larger ones. But yes, delays happen. You know, common reason for delay is that we need to acquire easements from private property owners wherever our sewers are going. Whether it's going along the road and we need additional right of way along the road or it's going between houses. And as you all know, sometimes we bring those, like we try to negotiate, that takes time. And sometimes they, they do reach court and the prosecutor takes the case for MSD through the preparation process, which is approved by the board. So that's kind of a common reason for delay, which I would call routine.
Can I, can I follow up real quick?
Sure.
So related to delay, I think the, the question was in terms of consent decree projects and the bridge projects in, in particular, which I, I did get an updated memo about where those stand. So I appreciate that. So two, two things. One is it, it was a matter of, you know, how much money do we need to have moving forward related to rates, given we've got some delays and missed deadlines? So that's, that's kind of what I was driving at. But as you were talking, it, it makes me wonder. So that you've got some projects that are consent decree projects. So the asset management projects then, are you suggesting that there aren't delays there? Because as you update the schedule for those projects, the dates continue to move. And so you wouldn't see delays necessarily as you would in a consent decree project. Did I interpret that correctly?
What I meant to say is there aren't any compliance deadlines. So we're not, nothing is non-compliant. But we, we do obviously update the schedules. And a good example of a very important asset management project that is, has been delayed and for, it's not even a supply chain reason. Our Mill Creek Substation, which feeds all the power to our largest treatment plant. We have transformers, high voltage transformers being custom-built in California by the only manufacturer in the United States that builds these transformers. They've failed to meet our specification. They don't, they don't handle a lightning surge. They fail internally. And this has been going on for a few months now. We're trying to resolve that with them through their design. So this isn't, this is a supplier and I wouldn't call it a normal supply chain issue that you would think of, like you can't get parts in time. So that's just an example of a, a big project, $2 million worth of equipment that we can't get. That causes a delay to that project as an example. And we still have, I'm still concerned about the supply chain. I've talked, you know, about pipe availability and substituting ductile iron pipe for PVC, for example. That's still a real problem, like into the foreseeable future. And we're starting to see that with electrical equipment, pumps and it, this impacts, it, it puts not just our capital projects at risk, but also the operation of the treatment plants.
Okay. So if you were to think about the delays then, are they, so they're spread out between the consent decree and the asset management?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
And you said there are only really four delays, four projects that are being delayed.
We only have, so right now, you know, the Phase 1 and all those projects are done. Over 200 CSOs were mitigated, resolved. The bridge was supposed to be the gap between, fill the gap between Phase 1 and Phase 2A. We're down to four projects that are under construction or in the construction phase. One of those will be completed in August. So that leaves three that have a schedule. They're behind schedule. There's nothing we can do to recover that schedule.
Right.
And with respect to rates, they are subject to potential penalties. But we are also, as you know, in the negotiation phase with regulators for Phase 2A, which the county is leading and MSD is supporting technically. So we're not aware of any forthcoming penalties. I think the regulators would prefer that we spend money on projects on the next round.
Thanks.
So I wouldn't, we, I don't see any direct correlation to rates because of, of delayed projects. There, we've reported the reason for the delays. And of those, those three that we'll still be working on after August, all the delays were caused by right of way acquisition.
Well, I think prospectively though, we need to understand the delays in order to manage the budget and project rate increases. So I mean, the number of projects being completed on time and those being delayed clearly factor into the budget for both the capital and the operating side of MSD. So I don't, I mean, as a county commissioner, I'm very concerned about rates. And I'm always going to be concerned about rates and, you know, whether or not we need to raise rates at any given time. And so getting a better, full understanding of the asset management side and the consent decree side and how we're doing by way of delivering on those projects is very helpful in the context of the overall finances of MSD. So that's why I asked the question and the information's helpful.
I understand that. And I don't know that this has been communicated. It, it's been communicated to the, the county team, obviously, but the, you know, the bridge modification, it was something that was, you know, imposed on MSD. Here you go, complete these projects by this date and we assume it's going to cost us much. The problem with the bridge in 2017, when this was conceived, is that it was, it was meant to be a one-year stopgap. Those projects weren't ready. There were a lot of unknowns. And this ties in to, you know, I only had two more questions that I was going to answer that were asked before. But there was a question about is it ever good to delay spending money or why would not spending money be a good idea? The answer is normally when you know about problems, it's better to spend money now. You know, fix it before it comes worse, becomes worse. With the bridge in particular, it was not good to start. It was, it was imposed by the court. We had to do it. In 2019, the regulators came back and said, here's an even bigger list. Do a billion dollars worth of projects, pick from the list that somebody made up in 2006. They're not real projects. They don't have real scopes. They don't have good budgets. That just would have been the bridge times, times 10 or times 20. And that's what we're negotiating with the county as the lead right now to propose a plan for the next 10-year phase where things are planned and we know what things will cost and how long it'll take to avoid that. So that's really, that's the reason or the way we got into the bridge and how we're going to avoid it in the future.
Hopefully, yes.
Hopefully that makes sense.
Indeed.
And then the one final thing I wanted to talk about was design build, build projects. That was the other question that came up. How does design build mitigate risks? Design build is a different method of, of contracting. So instead of designing to 100%, you know, with one, with a design consultant advertising the plans and, and getting bids, it's a, it's a more of a team effort. And you have a designer and a contractor that's selected at the beginning. They take the design up through at 30% and then they, they give a guaranteed price. And the, the way this is better is you, you work collaboratively in this process of developing, developing the cost. And you actually incentivize contractually reducing the costs and keeping the cost below that guaranteed maximum price. An example of that, like the largest one that we've done was, was a bridge project, successful bridge project, $37 million. We're going to get, I think, almost $5 million back because it's coming in $5 million below the $37 million guaranteed maximum price on time. So it's better because it's less adversarial. It's after the, after the contract is bid in a traditional design bid build, any change is a change order. And then we, as the managers of the project are in a position of arguing, no, it shouldn't really cost that much. So it's just a better way of allocating risk with design build. And it's something that wasn't available to Ohio counties until maybe six, seven years ago. But we're taking advantage of it now. I think that's all I have to share. If there's any follow-up questions, I'm happy to talk about it.
That was a good clarification on those questions. I certainly appreciate it. Yeah.
Yeah. And just one comment. You mentioned the bridge and how long, I mean, the bridge projects are old. They're, they're old projects. Cause and we had that as, you know, this, um, bridge between one phase and the other phase. And, you know, that was a time of significant dysfunction between the city and the county. And so now my understanding is that the city and the county are doing a better job of negotiating in tandem with one another, which I think is a benefit to everyone, including the ratepayers. And so I just did want to mention that, that I, I don't mean to come off as antagonizing. I'm trying, I'm asking questions because I'm the one working on the budget, right? So we're, we're all, we need to ask these questions in order to understand how to make good decisions. But my understanding, and I have talked to our staff about it, is that the. But my understanding, and I have talked to our staff about it, is that the relationship has improved, and we are trying to work together with MSD to create projects that everyone can concur with and agree to. That, the bridge, that was a different time.
Yes.
And the city had their plan, the county had their plan, there was all this dysfunction, the regulators didn't know where to go with that, and that's just not a benefit to anybody. So I am glad to know that things have changed and progressed, and that we are now virtually on the same page. But I still am going to have questions about, you know, these projects, because people, you know, we expect things to either be done on time or some kind of explanation as to why not.
Right.
Because it impacts prices, you know, as we know. Everything's more expensive right now than it was in 2017. So, thank you, I appreciate the follow-up. I did get an email also with some follow-up answers, so I appreciate the information.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate the feedback, and I do agree that it's much less dysfunctional with regard to the capital program. I think we're doing well. Thank you.
And I also heard a couple times during the discussion about possible, thinking about possible rate increases and all that stuff, the board has not discussed anything, I'm just addressing it to the people that are listening, has not discussed anything as it relates to rate increases, if that happens, or ever happens, that it'll come before the public for further discussion, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ryan. I'm glad we could address some of those questions. And then, now today, I'm going to talk about our sewer backup program. This was in response to just, I think, questions that come up occasionally when this topic arises. But today, really here to just give, as best as I can, a nice overview that will hopefully get at some of the key questions, and perhaps we can engage in other discussions in areas where we're identifying potential opportunities. So, there's a lot, there's a lot of information about the SBU program available, and there's a lot I could get into today, and trying to be mindful of time, so I'll go a little bit quick through these. But I do think it's helpful to give a little bit of background, just to make sure that anyone also who's listening, you know, gets the basics of the program we're talking about, where it comes from. So, just quickly, to start with, just to orient ourselves, this is the MSD service area, and I think it's just helpful to note, of course, we serve most of Hamilton County and small parts of our surrounding counties. We have over 3,000 miles of sewers, and our, you know, our goal and our objective, our mission every day is to collect and convey that wastewater to our treatment plants, so that it can be treated properly before it is returned to our rivers and streams. We view ourselves, you know, as your clean water agency, and I think that's important to keep in mind as we talk through where we're at today with our sewer backup program. Also, just want to, you know, as we look at our system and where we're at, just remind everyone that many of the sewers in our service area were built before we even had treatment. So, when you start with sewers that were just designed to convey flow to creeks, and then you, you know, gradually add on treatment, and then you add development, and then we have increased rainfall for whatever purposes you may, you know, understand them to be caused by. Our system today is unable to keep up with the demands that are put on it, both from the wastewater perspective and rainwater. Most of our city that's within the Hamilton County, most of the city of Cincinnati, is what we call combined sewer system. So, you know, I think it's pretty straightforward, that the combined sewers, of course, take both wastewater from our buildings, and they collect, they take the flow from collection system, from the stormwater that gets into our sewers, both from inlets. We also have inflow and infiltration that gets into our combined sewers. Our separated sewers also can be impacted by wet weather, even though they are designed to convey either wastewater or stormwater. We do have areas of the system, whether through illegal connections or other inflow and infiltration means where our sanitary sewer, our sanitary sewers also are impacted by wet weather. So, again, I don't want to go into a lot of detail about our consent decree, but I think it's, you know, important to have this understanding for the sewer backups. So our consent decree really is just the way in which we are required to address the problems that are caused by combined sewer overflows, recognizing that today, this is not how we design and build sewers. We design separated systems, that's the, you know, the better method to make sure we can convey everything to the treatment plants. In our current system, and as is common throughout other areas that have combined sewers, they're actually designed to overflow, so we have combined sewer overflows throughout our system. These are permitted outfalls, where during wet weather events, when there is too much rainfall that enters our sewer, the sewers overflow at these designated locations, and we monitor that. And that is essentially the main priority of our consent decree, is to reduce those combined sewer overflows from the system, to bring us into compliance with today's standards under the Clean Water Act. So, with the Wet Weather Improvement Program, we refer to a lot, or the WIP, you're all familiar with that. That's really just the program that was developed, required by the consent decree. It's what the city and county agreed to, to address the noncompliance and to bring our system to current standards. It is a very large program of hundreds of projects that it was recognized couldn't all be done at once, very costly, and all paid for by our ratepayer dollars. So, you know, the individuals that use our system, contributing with their rates, is how we pay for all of the required upgrades and improvements that we agreed to perform under the WIP. Various ways to address combined sewers, combined sewer overflows and sanitary sewer overflows, just, you know, kind of some categories, examples there. And as you know, as Ryan just talked about, our consent decree allows us to do the work in phases, and those phases are really just schedules of projects that we're performing based on what we can afford to do in our community. And importantly, while we have made a lot of progress, and I would love, on another day, to come talk to you about the progress that we had in Phase 1, or you can read all about it. You know, we are seeing water quality improvements, we've, of course, reduced CSOs, it was costly. But what we, you know, also want to point out, and I think is key here for this discussion, is even when we complete all of the WIP projects someday, often to the future, we will not have eliminated sewer backups. Sewer backups are not really being addressed by the WIP projects. The WIP projects are all designed to address the capacity, focusing on the overflows at the end of the pipes, the CSOs, the SSOs, and the reliability of the treatment plants to continue to, you know, build capacity in our system. But they are not focused on the sewer backup problem. So, let me get into, then, the sewer backup program and what it is. The sewer backup program is established in our consent decree. We did have sewer backups, and we did have a program to address them before the consent decree. The program, as it was developed in the decree, has three primary elements. But I just want to say, to start off, in addition to pointing out that the WIP projects don't address it, there really is no, the program is short-sighted in how it was established at the time. There are no solutions on a system-wide basis. The program has a component for prevention, which I will talk about, but overall, as we've seen, and we've talked about previously, it's reactive, and it's very costly, and we feel as though we're not getting ahead of the problem, in many cases. Oops. So quickly, what is this sewer backup under this program? This is to cover the backup of wastewater that comes into a building, usually basement, from the public sewer. The flow of the wastewater will be coming from the public sewer system into the property. Generally, this is for one of two reasons. One is lack of capacity during wet weather events, and the other is when there's some kind of operational or maintenance issue, typically a clog or a break in the public sewer itself. You know, one thing that, just to recognize again, I said we had a sewer backup program even before the consent decree, but in that case, generally, we would only be responsible for the cleanup and the, you know, potentially the damages. If there was some failure on MSD's part to operate or maintain its system, its sewers properly. So, we have a break or a clog we should have known about, so that's something that we would have provided cleaning services. That's really how most other cities operate a water in basement or a sewer backup program. What the consent decree did, and this isn't a negative comment, I'm just, it's a clarifying point, it essentially expanded our liability in an area where you typically would say, you know, we do not have responsibility because there's nothing that we can do to increase the capacity of the sewer system in a wet weather event, you know, short of very large-scale capital improvements. So that's, in legal terms, what we would call government immunity. The consent decree, and the sewer backup program and the consent decree eliminates that, and created this program that, you know, really, no other city, to our knowledge, has anything like it. It's good for our residents, we just want to recognize that there may be some need going forward to, you know, to really hone in on how we're going to solve the problem going forward. These are just some photos I shared of sewer backups. I think the other key thing I wanted to mention on this slide that comes up a lot, is that, as I mentioned, eligibility is backup of wastewater into a building from the public sewer. What is not covered is anything that is flooding, overland flooding, we refer to a lot, or some other failure in the private building lateral. The consent decree, the sewer backup component of the consent decree is very clear on this. It says, because MSD does not control flooding not emanating from the sewer or private laterals, MSD cannot take further action. So, this is, you know, you hear a lot about, we refer to overland flooding, and I'm going to get into the statistics of what we see with most of the, with many of the reports. But it is, again, because this program expands what we would otherwise lawfully be able to spend ratepayer dollars on, we have to follow the clear bounds of the program in the consent decree, unless it's changed. This is just, just want to reiterate, I think it's always important, anyone listening, to understand the process. We have a lot of information on our website, we try to put things out on social media. But first and foremost, we want people to know that regardless of what they think may have happened, they should call MSD if they have water in their basement. If you report it to us, you can report to our hotline, this is 24/7, this is, we have, you know, evening call takers, overnight call takers, we will respond. There's also, you can go online, the information is up there, so it's 513-352-4900. Please call us, so that we can come out and investigate. That's the first step. I'm going to get into the investigation in a bit, but the main steps are, the investigation, and if we determine you're eligible, we will provide cleaning services. Then there is a claims process, which is described fully in the consent decree, and how we manage any damages that are caused inside the property. And third is the sewer backup prevention program, which is for anyone experiencing recurring sewer backups that are due to lack of capacity. If they're due to a clog or a break in our system, that's something we address, and you're not, doesn't become eligible for the sewer backup prevention program. Our customer service investigation, really just want to, again, reiterate that we provide this to anyone who calls, we will respond. This is available 24/7, so again, report, this is just a snapshot from our website, where you can go on, you can just report directly on there, you don't have to call or talk to anyone. We will then have our dispatchers assign a crew to respond. On days in a week like this week, we will have more people working in this area, we have more crews available, so we ramp up from a dry weather day to a wet weather day. And those are areas where Jennifer manages that section, and, you know, and the staffing there. Something we learned several years ago, when we were not able to ramp up during that extreme storm in 2016. We've made significant changes, and really have never had that problem again, where people aren't able to get through and get a response. So what happens, once you call, we will investigate all reports. We put a lot of time and attention to every customer who reports. We have crews that will be assigned and get out there. And what are they doing? Generally, you know, the key steps of a sewer backup investigation are inspecting the manholes on the public sewer from the property, so we look at both upstream and downstream, we're looking for a surcharge in the public sewer system. If there is a cleanout on the private building lateral, which we have installed many of these as we've built up this program, the cleanout will allow us to also look to see if there is a surcharge in the, in the private building lateral as well. And we've also been installing what are called float level indicators on many of these locations, which helps aid our investigation. The customer service crews will also, you know, just do a review outside the property for signs of debris, overland flooding, and they will enter the property as long as the property owner allows them to observe what has taken place inside the property as well. If a manhole is surcharged, you know, we can see that at the time, if it's still surcharged. If we are out there after something has already receded and capacity is available in the sewer, we're looking for signs of debris, that's where those float level indicators can really be helpful for us to make sure we see if the, if the water levels were surcharged at the time of the event. We will, if we, if we're able to, when we do have areas where we have clogs or breaks, we will send out trucks, try to investigate and address anything as soon as possible. We can isolate that based on our manholes, where we can isolate it to an existing sewer segment, and really try to troubleshoot the problem, get the sewers flowing immediately. We also have, once we complete the actual field investigation, supervisors are assigned to all of these work orders, and they will review what was completed. If a cleaning was recommended, those will then be scheduled. We do err on the side of offering cleaning services, even if there is still some question as to what took place. So we will err on the side of providing those cleaning services. Sometimes later, it's determined that it was indeed a private lateral issue or overland flooding, which would only impact eligibility for damage claims. We do not go back and, you know, ask for reimbursement for cleaning. So you can see, these are just some of the follow-up things that we do. I had another, just figure, this is just showing our response time. So typically, except in some of the extreme storms, we're getting most of our investigations done in one to two hours. Four hours is really a key goal that's outlined in the consent decree, but once, once the volume of claims really pick, volume of cause really picks up, it's recognized that, you know, we will be just getting them done as expeditiously as practical. So there are, you know, maybe less than a quarter that take more than four hours for us to complete, but we track that for every call that comes in. So, just to talk about the causes, the main causes we see, and lead into what some of the solutions are. I think, you know, obviously, the first one, just, yes, there are sewer backups that are eligible for our program. Again, those are caused by inadequate capacity to convey all of the stormwater that mixes with the sewage in our combined sewers. We do have times where there is a clog or a block that's on our, on the main sewer that MSD is responsible for. But what we see a lot of are private building sewer issues. A lot of people, that their lateral has some kind of clog they didn't know about, can be caused by a number of reasons. And then, you know, a lot, a great deal of problems with overland flooding. So again, going back to that eligibility, when it's a stormwater overflow, stormwater is overflowing, it never went into our sewer, but it got into your property for a number of, you know, through a number of means, that's not going to be eligible for our program. And we really do our best to try to understand, you know, what's taking place on properties. You know, we have crews, like I said, they're out there on every one. And for the most part, we are, you know, seeing a large majority of properties that are impacted by a great deal of overland flooding. Even where we do have sewer backups, and they are eligible, typically, properties are getting unindated by both, which becomes a problem when we're looking to prevent the sewer backup. So that's just a stat, it's actually looking, you know, depending on where you take this count from, sometimes it's 85%, sometimes it's 90% of the calls we're getting that we're not able to provide services for. I have more stats later, I'll get into in a little bit more detail. Quickly, just wanted to, you know, just summarize the overland flooding. Quickly, just wanted to, you know, just summarize the overland flooding. These were just some pictures. I don't know why they're one at a time. Just to describe, this is a very common problem and it's only becoming more and more of a problem in, you know, Cincinnati is not alone in this. We are seeing, when we do have rain, you know, we have less days where we're getting rain, and we had a climate person come in and talk to us about this, but those days, it's, we get more rainfall at any given time. And the, the infrastructure we have, whether it's stormwater, combined sewers, streets, you know, we're just not able to convey that flow to where it needs to go. So there's impacts, whether it's getting into your home or causing street flooding. There's a lot of other problems here. We have stormwater utilities and stormwater is one area where in Hamilton County, you know, there's various different agencies responsible. So we, we do lack a comprehensive approach to addressing some of the problems we're seeing from stormwater, just in the way it's governed here. But again, MSD is doing its best to investigate and we will, we will respond to every call. And we want people to call us so we can try to figure out what's happening. And then, this is an area where we've talked about a lot. We see a lot of opportunity to help educate property owners, to help provide better response and communication. When we, you know, do not have, when they are not eligible for the sewer backup program, what is it we can do? We are the ones out there, we've seen the problem. So we've been working a lot and there's various, you know, things that we've changed on our website, changed the communication paperwork that we leave at properties to really try to help people, but there's still more that we can do. So these are just some areas where we've been working on. I think updating internal plumbing, considering disconnections if permitted, is one I put on there where that's an area of opportunity for us to engage with other agencies that have responsibilities in these areas so that people understand what is allowed, what isn't allowed. Many areas where we have, where we have connections from roof, from gutters and roof drains and foundation drains, we have a lot of stormwater coming in to the building laterals, people are flooding themselves out. And they, you know, oftentimes are told that they cannot disconnect that and just daylight it onto their property. That's against, you know, permitting and building standards. So really want to work with clarifying that, you know, work with other agencies on what is allowed and what isn't allowed. And it's, it's very confusing. I mean, something we've been looking at a lot and I don't have very clear guidance today that I could provide a homeowner if they ask me, am I allowed to disconnect my downspouts? You can put it into a rain barrel to store it for a period of time, but you can't just daylight it onto your property. You can't turn it out to your neighbor's property. So a lot of confusion there and I think it's an area we, we're trying to break through with some partners. Other things just, we've looked a lot at insurance, whether it's something that MSD would take on or that there's just private, private solutions out there and bringing attention to that to property owners. So that's one area where we'll probably, you know, continue to share information. At this time, we don't really recommend it as something that MSD would provide, but there's, again, there's other resources out there. So it's getting that information to the public so they know there's insurance options available when you do have those breaks or clogs. Okay, so let me, these are just some stats I put together to try to help under, you know, help just visualize what we're seeing with our sewer backup program. We, we do provide updates monthly. We have a spreadsheet on our website. I have a slide and a couple of slides where I show, and we track the program expenses and activities all the way back to 2004. So this is just three years of data, 2019, 2020, 2021. And I just wanted to share that, you know, when you look at the, this is the residential customers. MSD has about 200,000 residential customers in our service area. We receive only 2% or less of those, people are reporting sewer backups every year. Not to minimize the importance of, of those callers, but it is a, you know, a small subset of our overall service area that is impacted by this problem, yet we're spending a lot of money on it. So looking at a couple of different figures here, again, if you look over the, on the left side, I'm showing that of all of the reports we get, so everyone that calls MSD, we have about 15% where we're offering cleaning services. Again, as I said before, sometimes we offer cleaning services even when we're unsure about the cause. So slightly higher number there than on the right side where we've determined that you're eligible for our services. We are able to break out the eligibility status based on whether it's something where that we, we had inadequate capacity. You can see the much larger number there. And then the smaller number is where there's some kind of a, you know, maintenance issue where we were able to identify a blockage or a maintenance issue in MSD sewer. So again, 86% of the calls we received over this three-year period were not eligible for our program. One area where, is, is another area of opportunity that Jennifer and I are working on, it's, it's challenging for us to identify, you know, a cause of the backup if it's not MSD's. We do know that, you know, we can say what it isn't, but we can't always say what it is. So a lot of them are overland flooding, private building laterals. Whether we're not, whether or not we're able to pinpoint those and show better statistics on that 86% on the right side is something, you know, I think we're, we're still trying to, to improve that area. And then the claims. So again, we, if you look over, now I don't have my numbers with me, they're on this slide. Over that three-year period, how many calls we had, it's only a small percentage of the calls we received that, than we get claims for. So here showing, you know, about 4% of the, of the, you know, people that ever contacted us with the, what they thought was a sewer backup, end up sending us a claim for damages. If you look at the right side, what I'm showing is the disposition of all those claims that we received. So we've settled, and this is again over a three-year period, we've settled over 60%. We've approved those, paid those out, completed. And, you know, we have about 9% that over this time period, we didn't have resolution of, so they're pending for some, one reason or another. But the denial of 31%, I know is another area where we get a lot of questions, you know, why are we denying claims? There are several reasons that a claim could be denied. And probably the most common one is people are submitting claims even though we determined they weren't eligible for our services. So we've been out there, they get the information, we provide, you know, a lot of information, including information about filing a claim, but then we may have later determined that they aren't eligible for our services. So they will file a claim anyway and it will be denied. So that's a, a number of those. And then the others are, they didn't have any eligible damages. What that means is perhaps they only had some damages outside of their property. Those are not covered under the sewer backup program. Things in, you know, in your yard, for example, would not be covered. We, we do inform everyone. So if you file a damage claim, you will get a formal response. You'll either get a settlement offer or you will get a denial letter and we specify in there, your right to request review with the federal district court. And then that is a different process that people can follow. There's assistance from the Legal Aid Society for anyone who seeks review from, in federal court of our claims. And people can also file for review just for our denial of, you know, providing any services. So the Legal Aid Society is available to help with that. And there's a lot of information on our website that we provide just for context and that. You're not required to have an attorney. It's designed to be, you know, just a process for individuals to, to do on their own. What we've seen, and I didn't provide figures on this, but we've discussed it in the past. In federal court, what we've seen is generally the magistrate has upheld our decisions, agrees with us that when we are denying, it is, you know, it is due to it being outside of the scope of the program or, you know, the damages were not what the claimant is requesting. Sometimes we do see some adjustments to the amounts. People can bring forward more information to provide support for what they've lost and we will often settle those hopefully before it even goes to a hearing. This is the spreadsheet that I was referring to. I did not bring copies of this today, but it is, that's the link where it's available. Again, we update this monthly and it goes all the way back to 2004. So happy to email those to you and email you a link directly. I know it's not easy always to, to copy it over, but just want to make sure you know that's there because this breaks down what we're doing, both in terms of the number of, so the first line there is investigation work orders. That, that translates to people calling us, calling our sewer backup hotline or reporting online. So that's how many we've had to date, well, through June for 2022, 2056. And then you can see there, we would just report the, the status of those and we report the, the costs by, as they're broken down. The, the large number at the bottom for total spent year to date, as you can see, is over $147 million. What I want to talk about next and, and lastly is, you know, what we're doing, what we can do to, to eliminate sewer backups and to, you know, address these problems for people because that's, that's a lot of money. And when you look at, so that's total, including claims, cleaning, everything we do. When you look at the sewer backup prevention program, which is the other, the third prong of the consent decree program, we've spent over $60 million just on the prevention program itself and we've installed 1,291 prevention devices. So again, 1,291 properties have been protected under the sewer backup prevention program. There are some things about this program that are working very well and there are some things about this part of the program that are not working. This figure here, this is something we've been using the, it's, it's essentially a heat map type of technology, but what we're showing here are SBU hotspots. So areas where over time we've seen, you know, a lot of SBUs. And this is only showing those that we've confirmed are capacity related. So we've, we've confirmed that we're having sewer backups and it's because our system cannot convey all of the flow in wet weather. So they're just, you know, kind of some dense areas. You can see the red shaded area in the background is, are our sewers, actually. So this is straight from one of our, our GIS mapping tools where we've recently been able to kind of really dig in on the data and identify the problem areas, which we weren't really able to do before because it was all just by addresses in a database. So using our GIS mapping, we're getting a much better look at what the problems are. So again, under the sewer backup program, if you have two or more sewer backups in five years, we will, you are eligible for MSD to come out and install or design a solution and install a sewer backup prevention device. We, the number again, that we've completed to date is 1,291. We do find that not all customers want one of these installed on their property. They, they have become very expensive for MSD to do this work. We're oftentimes doing a lot of internal plumbing modifications. There are pumps involved and, you know, it's really, it can be fairly intrusive into someone's home. Sometimes they're installed inside, you know, inside the home in the basement or they're installed out in a yard. And, you know, they're, they're not necessarily what people want on their property. However, they are overall very successful in terms of limiting the ability of the, the main sewer to back up through the building lateral onto people's property. We have seen just a great deal of success at that very basic, you know, which is the objective of installing a backflow prevention device. And where they can cause, where they can be problematic and not perform is, we've seen people modify them, make modifications to the system themselves, which they're not supposed to do. And then we've seen issues with power outages, which that's an area where the property owner has responsibility to have backup power or to know if the power goes out, they need to, you know, there's an alarm that can go off on the pump. So that's when these can be ineffective as installed. But overall, just in terms of solving the problem of sewer backups, are they effective or not? Again, they can be very effective for that one private property, but they're not necessarily effective system-wide. And, and they've actually started to cause negative impacts where if we've installed multiple prevention devices in an area, we're pushing the problem downstream or outward. And I have some examples of that. So in addition to being costly, sometimes not wanted by people, and then also, you know, some of the problems that can occur, we're, we're trying to find more cost-effective and more permanent solutions to the sewer backup problems rather than what is, you know, somewhat reactive Band-Aid approach. So the typical SB prevention program, I do have, you know, we have success with that. We've talked about some other areas previously and this is where we've been focusing some efforts in recent years. So operational controls, I'm going to go through an example on. And then, you know, where needed, what, what are the capital solutions? How do we really get at this problem? And then, as I mentioned before, really there's a lot of things that people can do on private property, both for overland flooding, but also for sewer backups. You know, they can, they can install prevention devices on their own, they can do other things to reroute their internal plumbing. So the typical sewer backup program, this is a, a true example of an area in our system. The, the highlighted green area in the middle, you can see is where we've constructed, we've installed, we have operational prevention devices on all those homes because they were eligible for the program. And then you can see outside of there where we have multiple capacity-related SBUs now, you know, in the surrounding area. So this is what we see if we start to, you know, prevent the, the sewer backups in one, on one street or in one location, the water still needs to go somewhere. And we haven't provided, you know, we haven't completed any other solutions for that capacity problem. Our, our technical folks that work on this like to call this one the Ring of Fire. But I know that this is a, an area in our Hyde Park, Hyde Park Mount Lookout community that I've talked to many of these residents and they are desperate for a more permanent solution to this problem. We also have, in addition to the sewer backups in their homes, we also have at least one overflowing manhole, you know, which is evidence of the combined sewer just surcharging during rain events. And then that flow is, you know, potentially just sitting in, filling in backyards. There's nothing we can do with a super prevention device to solve that problem. So we talked about operational controls. We have a preliminary report on this and I don't know that it's been shared with the commissioner, so I'm previewing this. But these operational controls are something we're, we're really still evaluating their effectiveness, but we have seen some success. So this is MSD's, we, our, our engineers and both that have been looking at these problems for a long time, started, once we were able to really hone in on those hotspots with the mapping and see why are we getting so many capacity-related SBUs right here, what could we do short of just taking the traditional single property approach? And what we developed is a very simple design of an operational control that's essentially just a gate on our manhole that will prevent the, the stormwater that typically enters our system in the streets. So you have stormwater inlets, waters getting into our manhole and then exceeding capacity. So we're kind of closing off access to our combined sewer only during rain events. So we've, we've started with a, a very simple, very rudimentary prototype. They've kind of, this has all been done in-house and installed by MSD in our manholes. But we've only done this, so we're restricting the flow of stormwater into our combined sewer. We're only doing this where we know we're not going to cause flooding problems, of course, that are, could have other issues. So I'm going to get into the specific example in a minute. So back to that-
Can I ask a question real quick? Back to that design, because I didn't-
Yeah, sorry.
I cannot make heads or tails of this design.
I know, I'd like one of the engineers-
Help me understand what perspective we're looking at here.
Okay, so on the left side, the perspective you're looking at is, would be going, that is looking into our manhole. So you would be kind of, that circle there is how the stormwater pipe gets into our, so that, so the manhole is kind of that brick-like cylinder all the way down and then you would have a cross-section pipe. So what you're looking at is a door that would close-
I see.
-when we have, when we have enough flow coming in. On the right side, it's a cross-section. So because we, I don't have the full pipes in this visual, am I explaining it right?
The blue box is afloat.
The blue box is afloat, that helps. So the blue box is afloat, so there you're going to have the, the kind of orangish, yellowish is going to float up and close that opening. So it closes- So it closes access off to the manhole. It's a pretty simple structure, yes.
Why don't we just go on through, because I have several comments too, and then we can-
Yeah, I'm, I'm almost done, because these last ones go pretty quickly. This is the same visual where we have the hotspots mapped. The little green pyramids here show where we've installed these operational controls. So we have nine areas where it was determined that these operational controls could be successful because we have capacity, if you just get the water down the street, maybe, you know, one or two streets. So there is, you know, a very clear example here. I don't, is there a little pointer here? So what we have here is these two areas in the rectangles. We've got numerous sewer backups. All of these are confirmed capacity problems. We have a few constructed prevention devices. Other areas, they're eligible, they're not installed yet. Up at the top here, the thicker green line in the street, we have a larger sewer. We have capacity in that sewer every time these people are having sewer backups, but these are small little combined sewers in those streets. The, the topography here allows the flow to just go by gravity if it doesn't get into our sewer. So we've also, so we've done this, this is in the city with notification to our other partners. We've done this based on our, you know, estimates with the understanding that we're not going to create any kind of safety issue with too much flow in the street, at least no change from what it was before. And we've been monitoring the success of this. So does it work? Because I think that's, you know, going to be the big question here. And that's where we get into some of the reports. So there were nine of these, these hotspot areas back here where we're, where we're testing this. We've installed in those nine areas 40, I think 43 actual doors on the manholes. And what we're seeing is, if you look at how many sewer backups they were having before, how many they're having today, yes, there's been a great deal of success. We made some minor modifications to allow them to close even further, is my understanding. We've improved our installation device. But we really need more time because if you look at, because we just, we're, we're doing this over about 12-month period. So yes, you can say since July of 2021, we've had zero SBUs in this area, which is great. But have we had the exact same recurrence interval of storm as we had the year prior? You know, that's where it gets into a little bit more difficult to prove with certainty that, that this works. However, for the almost, you know, negligible cost compared to anything else we could do, we're continuing to explore where this could be an option, where we have capacity, because it's something we're doing, again, in-house, and we're measuring the success. We have level sensors when we do these as well, so we're able to see what's actually happening in real time. And it's really just giving us a better sense of what's happening there. Anyone in these areas that's eligible for an SBUPP is still eligible. They're still in our program. We're not stopping that. But this, this particular location is one where I, I know at least one property owner has resisted over and over our sewer prevention program. He doesn't want it. He wants us to, you know, enlarge the sewer. So that becomes a capital project where, you know, that's, that's where I'm going to get to next. So we are looking for alternatives. So where are there, there are other areas where unfortunately, we've dug in, we know this is a hotspot, but we can't restrict stormwater access into our combined sewer. We would increase surface flooding to a point where it's not acceptable. But if you do look at this particular example, we're really close to a creek. And so is this an opportunity for us to plan a sewer separation project where you would just remove the, you know, you would install storm sewers and convey that flow to the creek? We can come up with all sorts of solutions. That one, yeah, that's, that's a pretty reasonable solution. Here, you're not close to any creek. You got, that shows what's called a bowl or a depression. So, you know, a sewer separation project, you'd be taking the stormwater, you'd be conveying it pretty far to get it anywhere. There really is nowhere to store the stormwater if you were to, you know, create a detention base, and there's just not enough capacity there. So these two examples are ones where we are, another effort we have ongoing is a study that was funded, and it, we called it the East Side Study, but really, it's looking at these SBU hotspots and saying, what would be the capital solutions here that we could design for? But those are all going to come with a cost. And these are costs that we currently do not have, these are projects that currently do not, we don't, they haven't been identified, they were not WIP projects. So we're really trying to, you know, get a better handle of, of the scope of these kind of projects. If we were to do capital solutions to address the capacity, we're completing an alternatives analysis. So again, that, you know, we can't get the operational controls, what would it be? And I think, you know, this is what people want to know, at least, what is the solution? Now, whether we can afford it and/or whether MSD is the only entity that has any responsibility for this problem is a bigger question, I think, for us to all consider and start talking about. Because conveying stormwater to a stream there, if we don't otherwise have a combined sewer issue, we don't have an asset management issue, you know, that's a, that's a big project for MSD to undertake. So we'd love to continue to explore, you know, whether it's federal dollars. My last slide was the FEMA project where we were able to get federal dollars to do something. Of course, this is a pretty extreme solution because we're actually removing the homes. We don't have a lot of areas where that's what we would suggest. But there's, we are, we are evaluating FEMA for mitigation as well. So to not actually remove homes, but to mitigate these problems and, you know, any other solutions that are out there. But I just, I think the important thing that, what we're trying to evaluate with these is, what are those solutions? Do we have a capital project that is needed, that we could connect to, to make it a cost-effective solution to also address the SBUs, which really hasn't been done to date? We have not looked at our projects, whether WIP projects or asset management projects, and said, do we also have an SBU problem in this area? And can we do something, you know, more and solve that problem without a whole entirely new project? So I wanted to share that. The, the report on the operational controls was a preliminary report. I did provide it to county administration a while ago, but I, I think because it's kind of preliminary, we've been hesitant to publish that. And that was all I had. And I'm sure you have a lot of questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your presentation. Not a lot of questions, but more so comments. That SBUPP program per cost, save per household, what would you average that to be? I know it depends on the, the house and the condition. And you were saying-
Yes. And it really does vary because some homes, it's a much simpler solution than others. The average cost, I had that, and I'm trying to find it. I believe it is about $46,000.
Okay.
I know it's close to $50,000, which is, you know, when you take all the costs because there's a planning and design and the construction.
So I won't ask this question because Ryan will probably have to answer it, but I'm thinking, what is the difference between that and like a, a double sump pump or something? It's more advanced? It lasts longer? Or why, why couldn't you use something like that instead of this $46,000?
Why is it so expensive? Well, really, I, I think, so Jennifer Richmond is here, and she might be able to answer it as well, because each one of these, if you don't want to get into the detail, I'll just get it at a high level. Sometimes we can say to a property owner, if they want to do something, sometimes property owners want to do it on their own, and it would cost a lot less. I mean, there are a lot of reasons that MSD doing the work is more expensive. How we, we do these, we don't do them in bulk. It's all an individual project. So there is a design for it, and then the construction. But most of it has to do with the fact that we really need to tie together the internal plumbing, because there's typically stormwater that needs to be rerouted to the other side of the prevention device.
That's a lot of money per household, for sure.
Yes.
And my concern, and has always been my concern, is the, the people that do not qualify for the SBU program. And on this, I appreciate all this PowerPoint. It's hard to read right on the side.
Oh, yes, I can fix that.
So when you get a chance, that's fine. But it's real obvious that there are lots of people that don't qualify. And so how do we adjust the program? I know you mentioned earlier about the consent decree not including overland flooding. And so I would think that that would be a, a big variable because of all the development that's going on now that maybe a lot of those households would be impacted by overland flooding. But my concern is, with this pie being so big and, and 96, this is who reported it.
There wasn't that show, here, let me show you.
Let me see, on here.
And I do realize, I apologize, those numbers didn't come out well.
That's okay, that's okay. The service calls-
This one, yeah. So the, well, so that's just the ones that filed damage claim. I think the more important one is everyone, this is our investigation results. So if you look on the right of the calls we get, and this is an annual average, 86% are not eligible.
Yeah. And I'm, I'm just really trying to figure out, how do we not necessarily make them eligible for this program, but eligible for something, especially as we move forward, and people are talking about MSD and what does it do for me, and all that kind of stuff? It's just such a high number that don't qualify for this major crisis. And so that's something, we'll just have to figure it out. I had a couple more comments. Not eligible to claims. The fact that we spent $147 million since 2004, I mean, I'm glad that we're spending money, but I just want to, don't want to miss those that are so desperate. And I know you guys don't want to do that either. But how do we do it? Where does the money come from? And how do we reach all those people that are not, not getting help? So I think that was it for me. Did you have anything?
Yes. Thank you. I thank you, Director Christie, for being here. Just a couple of questions. So at the start of the presentation, you said that the SBU program is really outside of the, the rest of the operation of MSD when it comes to all the money spent on the different projects. But, and I, I'm just trying to understand the relationship between some of the projects that we do in the SBU. It's true to say that when you have a combined system that you dis, decombined, like you separate, that certainly must help with these SBU issues in that area when you are separating the sewage from the stormwater, correct? So there must be some impact, right? Maybe it wasn't designed to specifically impact the SBU program, but certainly when you disconnect these two systems, there are benefits.
Yes. So it's not, yeah, I don't want to say that the work we're doing under the consent decree won't have an impact in helping to alleviate some areas where there's SBUs. We are, we're not, we're not separating everything, right? So there are some solutions that are in the WIP where it is a separation. That's the project we're creating, you know, we're, we're adding a stormwater sewer, or we're creating detention. So we're building capacity. The problem is, the, the sewer backups that are concentrated, you know, where we have a lot of these problems, you know, are in a neighborhood that's kind of off of the main, you know, the main sewer, where the overflow ultimately reaches the creek. And that's what we're trying to reduce. So we can oftentimes are eliminating or reducing those overflows, but we didn't, we missed this bottleneck here, because that was never part of the scope of that project to begin with. And it won't, won't really help the overflow, because, you know, it's, it's just, it's isolated to a few streets. So overall, you know, everything's connected, but you're not necessarily able, even if you relieve the system over here and building capacity, it didn't really help this right here, because there's one bottleneck. And none of that was part of it. And none of that was part of what was originally identified as the solutions to the CSOs and SSOs in the WIP. It wasn't a holistic approach that-
You know, I understand that they're not designed specifically to alleviate the SBUs, but I, I can't believe that some of those projects don't help alleviate some of the SBUs. Not, maybe not all, but because they're not designed to do that specifically. But certainly, there's an impact there, I would hope, to eliminate some of the SBUs or at least decrease that.
Yes. I, I don't want to, yeah, we do-
Okay. I just, I want to just clarify that because I'm hopeful that, that I'm correct, that-
You are correct. And I just wanted to clarify, so I think we've gotten a lot of the low-hanging fruit as far as separation projects. The Lickron Valley Conveyance System is a big one. It was very expensive. But when we look at other parts of, of our area, the east side, Hyde Park, Oakley, there's nowhere to go with the stormwater. So separation, it's a great idea, but it would require a, a deep tunnel at, and a really large expense. And we are looking at that to see if it could be a, you know, a future substitute WIP project or something. But the cost of doing it is not the same as a, a neighborhood where you can just add a storm sewer, take it to a creek that's a few hundred feet away. We're talking about taking it to probably a treatment facility that might be miles away, at a cost of a couple hundred million dollars to alleviate a very local problem.
You know, I'm not suggesting that your project, or your things should be designed around SBU. I'm just suggesting there must be an impact, a positive impact to SBU.
I think Ryan's comment that it, we've kind of got, we have hit a lot of those.
Okay.
What's left and what we're seeing with, when we do this mapping are these concentrated areas where they're, we're not getting at those. Those aren't, there's not a solution.
So it might, you know, moving forward, I've never thought about this, but as you design these projects, it would be interesting to know if there is an anticipated impact to SBU programs in those areas where the projects are being designed for another day.
Yes.
But, but certainly, I, I think it would be helpful for us to have that knowledge as you guys design these projects. Just a couple other things. I don't want to dwell too long on anything, so I've got a couple of questions. So I, I remember back when we were talking to a bunch of residents about the timeframe to contact MSD if you suspect you have an SBU issue. Can you remind us what that timeframe is? Because I know we extended it. What, what is that?
So the current timeframe is 48 hours. That, but that only pertains to, so if you, you have to report a sewer backup, a suspected sewer backup, within 48 hours of when you-
Discover it.
Discovered it. It was 24.
Okay.
But that only, that doesn't mean we won't come out and investigate. You know, so again, we don't want people to think, oh, this happened days ago, I shouldn't report it. They should still report it, and we'll determine if, for some reason. Usually, what happens is if you wait too long, there's going to be no, no sign of a sewer backup, and, and we're going to not be able to-
There's just no evidence, right?
Right.
Yeah, okay. I just have two other things. Hopefully, not too long. So the, the other one, I'm intrigued to know, I just, I just didn't know that some people's stormwater runoff, say from a gutter, goes into a system and combines with the sewage for that household. I did not know that. And I cannot believe that we're not being, as a government, friendlier to those that would like to disconnect those from their personal sewer. So tell me, how many properties in Hamilton County have that kind of system?
Yeah, I don't know.
A lot.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I don't know.
Well, mine doesn't. I mean, I might-
Well, if you're in a separated area, that may not be an issue. But even still, I mean, a lot of people only have one lateral.
Well, I'm, I'm talking, I'm not talking about the large stormwater. I'm talking about a gutter on my house that the water, instead of draining out into my yard, drains into an, an under-the-ground system that combines with the sewage and creates even a bigger issue when it comes to backups. How many, we have a lot of households like that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And to be honest with you, when you think about it, when you, when you pour a bucket of water down your drain, it's not going to drain right away in your sink. You know, you wash your floors, and it's not going to drain. It's the same thing with the gutters. They're coming down beside your house and going into the drain, the main drain from your house. And it can't go fast enough because it's a small drain. And so that is backing yourself up with just the rain.
This seems like such a simple thing to address.
There's a lot of building-
Okay, well, you-
Yes, it's a, it is a building, a big building code dilemma that I feel like is one of the other nuts we, like, we need to crack, right?
Okay.
We should be able to, to get ahead of this.
Yeah. Well, I mean, when we're talking about SBUs, I mean, if that's contributing to the backup in the home, it doesn't it seem like that would be a simple solution to try to eliminate some of that? So one last thing. So as has been mentioned, we've, we talked to enough constituents to understand this frustration, that there is a certain misunderstanding about what this program covers. I think part of that is expectations, by the way. I think in some ways, people hear about a program and- I think in some ways, people hear about a program and just, they call because they're very desperate to get some assistance, whether it's overland flooding or backup. So, what do you say to the idea that, I had a call recently where it wasn't sewer backup, but it wasn't, or rather, it was overland flooding, but they associated that with a lack of capacity in the stormwater, the public stormwater system, right? And so, what do you say to someone like that? Because they're associating these public systems, whether it's stormwater or sewage, with a lack of capacity, and that problem then ends up in their basement. So, what is the response to that?
Trying to think of the best way to...
Do you know what I mean?
I know exactly what you mean. The stormwater, and some people will say, well, your combined sewer doesn't have enough capacity, so that should still be covered. And it's not, because it's, it's not, MSD is not responsible for, and we can't address stormwater. We don't, we, you're paying for stormwater management, you're paying another entity, regardless of where you live. So, I think it's a gap essentially in the public services that are provided, and it's kind of a, you know, I think an ongoing failure for people to understand, just because it's a combined sewer system, MSD isn't responsible for conveying stormwater to the combined sewer, right? So, if there's nowhere for the stormwater to go, we can't provide that solution. It's, and I think the problem is, we need to work together as a region and say, this is a bigger problem. MSD can be a part of the solution, but we have to have the other responsible parties at the table, and those, you know, whether it's, you know, we get more creative, whether they are, you know, different ways of building our streets and our right-of-ways so that you can have some green infrastructure or storage solutions.
For the impervious surface.
Or more stormwater, you know, or you need to build stormwater infrastructure.
Or address the impervious surface issues that we have too, right?
Or you can, yes, ways to incentivize...
Right.
People to take action on their own. And right now, we're not doing that as a community, and I think there's a default expectation that MSD can solve it. And, I mean, it's very clear, both in the consent decree and just generally in our, in the laws that we have to follow, that we can't, you know, we are not responsible for conveying the stormwater or collecting the stormwater, so...
No, I hear you, and I agree, and I'm defending that all the time.
Yeah.
When people call, it's like, well, you know, they're only obligated to do this, but there's this real issue here of this overland flooding stuff, and maybe we should convene a group.
I think it requires, yeah, a more collaborative...
An impervious surface was part of that conversation about this overall issue. Okay, all right. Thank you very much. I appreciate the presentation.
Madam President? Oh, I'm sorry.
Just a couple other things. The same pie that you showed me, and it says the percent of service calls that result in claims. So, the ninety-six percent that did not result in claims, you have down here that some customers have no eligible damages, or they fail to provide documentation. I'm sure there are other categories on why they didn't qualify, and if I can see that, that would be great, because that's just such a large number.
Okay.
And I think the bottom line is, you know, these antiquated pipes that nobody ever thought about going in to repair or make sure they were adequately pumping water or sewer or whatever, and we, all these years went by. I think specifically about Lincoln Heights, how old Lincoln Heights is, and I don't think anybody has ever gone in there and looked at the pipes. Maybe you guys have for a reason, but it's just, like you say, it's just bigger than us. It's bigger than MSD, it's just a regional worldwide problem that has never been addressed. And now, we're trying to put Band-Aids on it, and I don't know, it'll be, you had on the, on your PowerPoint, in the future, the far future, where, when are we ever going to get to where we need to be with these pipes in this sewer system? It's just, it's so old and antiquated, so, anyway, yes.
Madam President, yeah, just briefly, just as the board's aware, and just broadly for the conversation, the impervious surface group that has been pulled together, I think the second focus area of that conversation is designed around looking at coordination amongst various stormwater agencies, trying to reconcile rate structures, et cetera. And I think when combined with the opportunity to look at an impervious surface fee, Commissioner Drehouse indicated, you know, perhaps that is the long-term future of trying to address this issue, because as Director Christie indicated, obviously, a charge for wastewater can't be used for specific purposes. But as we continue to look at the impervious, the potential for the impervious surface fee and different stormwater fees around the county, perhaps that is the more comprehensive way of approaching this long-term. I did have one other quick comment, just going back and, I'm sorry, just going way back to the beginning of the conversation, just a bit of context to add for folks who may be watching at home. There was, I think, some conversation about the bridge, the bridge program in particular, and some discussion about that. And for people, again, watching at home, I know the board clarified this last time, that the bridges, the bridge project is not an actual bridge, but a set of programs designed to fill the gap between Phase One and Phase Two of the consent decree. I think it was, Diana, was it twenty-eighteen? I think that that was approved. So, but that was ultimately a, back at the time in twenty-eighteen, the regulators had received two different plans, one from MSD, one from the county. The regulators were unable or unwilling to select one of those plans over the others. So, there was, in fact, a negotiation period between the county, the city, MSD, and the regulators on all of those projects, on which projects would be included. I'm not saying that there was unilateral agreement across the board in terms of which projects would ultimately go into the plan and which ones would not, but there was a broader conversation. So, I just want to, at the end of the day, indicate that it was the regulators who ultimately approved and imposed that plan. It's not as if the county had unilaterally imposed a slate of projects that we decided solely on MSD for the bridge. I just wanted to make that clear, that this was ultimately something approved by the regulators. So, thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks, Jeff. And certainly that impervious surface fee will, it's another Band-Aid. It won't solve all the major problems we have, but it's a good start. So, thank you both.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I forget her name. Yeah, thank you. Yeah.
Madam President, yeah, just wondering, as we talk about the impervious surface fee, we've had a number of presentations related to that, and we had some questions. When should we expect to see another round of conversation about impervious surface?
We had some, and I apologize, it was in our court for quite some time, and we just recently shared some information, some feedback. We have a written draft that I know we just recently shared with your team. So, I think we're ready to have a conversation. One of the things we identified was, you know, the need to, to answer some of those questions, really, was going to require another level of work, which we always knew we had more work to be done. But I think some of the questions, we weren't really able to answer without getting into that next phase. But I know that, I believe we're all ready now, but there was intended to be perhaps another meeting, set, round of meetings with the stakeholders that Jeff or Holly may have...
Yeah, I think that's the case, and we're trying to get the stakeholder meetings reestablished. There were some stakeholders that were actually added at the board's request, and so I think we're trying to get some of the stakeholders up to speed before we kick those off again.
So, maybe a month or two, perhaps, before it gets to this meeting?
That sounds about right, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. See you in a couple weeks. All righty. I'd like to make a motion to go to, unless Commissioner Drehouse, did you have anything else?
Nope.
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to RC Section 121.22 G2 to discuss the acquisition of property.
Second.
Commissioner Sumar Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.